Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're going to call the meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, November 15. And I'm going to do a roll call because we've got some people online and some people not here. And some people, anyway, we'll do a roll call. So Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
Counselor McKim.
Here remotely.
And Counselor Hock.
I'm, I am here. I don't have the video on because I don't see how bad I look.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Counselor Hock is feeling under the weather. She's here remotely.
Um, I think that probably means I can't vote, but.
What did you say, Kim? I think Ms. Hock was asking if, um, in order to vote, she would need her video on.
That, that's true. That's true. So you can't vote. And that's, that is up to you. And now we will move to item two, which is our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our time for a public comment for items that are not already listed on the agenda. There'll be a timeline of three minutes per speaker. If anyone would like to make comment, go ahead and come up to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. Okay, I see no public comment. We'll move then to the adoption of our agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? No? Okay. Then we will go ahead and proceed. Consider it approved. Now we have department updates. Do we have any departments that would like to make an update to us at this time? Auditor Smith, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. I wanted to do a department update and let you know that we've already processed all the election workers pays. And that will be out really quickly. And so I know that that's always a concern after election, not just getting election workers, but retaining them. So I thought you guys might like to hear some good news and to let you know that, that that has already happened. I'm very appreciative that my staff worked really hard on that and that we are really quick, trying to quickly pay everyone who is good enough to come and help us. So I just want to touch base and let you know that.
Thank you. Are there any other department updates? All right. Now we have council liaison updates. Are there any updates from council members? All right. I guess I would just mention that the Community Justice Response Committee has their next meeting this Monday. And so almost a week from today. And that's at four thirty, four thirty to six here in the NatU Hill Room. And those meetings are open to the public. So I just wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that. And if there are no more updates from council, we will move to item seven. And that is the presentation of the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission Annual Report. And I'd like to invite Counselor Munson to give a brief presentation of that report and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have the distinct honor or something else of being Chair of the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission for another year. And this last year was not a busy year at all for us in terms of a commission. It was a very busy year for people dining and enjoying beverages in Monroe County. So we had, we had a successful year in terms of making up for two years of a pandemic, which certainly curtailed the revenue from this tax. This tax will, has been promised by the city of Bloomington to be devoted to expansion of the convention center. And that discussion is ongoing. The, the funding is there and it will be available whenever a plan is developed. And for the report itself, I will invite the public to find a copy for your information on the county website. It is, you can find it through the county council webpage, or you can find it through the boards and commissions webpage. So it is available for everybody. And it's, it's a brief and very dry report that just shows the amount of revenue that has come in and where expenditures have been made. And I think for the council members, it is in your packet. So I would answer any questions if you have one.
Um, I know the re, the, the committee is made up of a very specific appointees. Is there still a vacancy?
Yes. And I should tell you who sits on this commission and what the commission does, other than approve an annual report. It is comprised of the president of the Board of Commissioners, the mayor, a representative from the county council, which is yours truly, a representative of the city council, which this year is Mr. Dave Rallo. And two members of presently of who manage or own restaurants and represented to you is One World Catering and Lenny's and Nick's English Hut. So certainly we picked very good representatives to, to begin our work with this commission. We have a vacancy now and have for the last year. And we are looking for an establishment in the county to to fill this vacancy. And do you know there aren't that many restaurants that are or other facilities that are located just in the county and not in the city itself? But we wanted to balance this between the city and the county. So please, please find out more information if you are interested. And I'm always happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions from council? All righty then. Thank you very much for that report. Appreciate it. We will move then to the Board of Commissioners, item eight.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1,000, 0068, General Fund Commissioners of $2,251 in the services category.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff's not here.
We're thrown off with Jeff being remote.
Sorry. Wasn't quick enough on the mute button.
Okay, whatever will we do?
You're missed already.
Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Thank you. Yes, I'm here tonight requesting just a slight additional in this particular account. The extension office is affiliated with Purdue University. And as a result of that, we have requirements that for leasing of technical where that they, that they are required to use. And what's actually happened is in years past, this has always been there, at least for the past three years. I went back to check and see where did this come from? And we had had money in other lines that we were able to make a transfer to do that with. But however, this time we are cutting it pretty close to the bone. So I'm here at requesting this additional to make up for the slight difference that we have.
Are there any questions from council on this appropriation? Any public comments? All righty then. Can we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And we have item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1,000, 0068, General Fund Commissioners of $25,000 in the services category.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. We are presently finding that in this, this account line, we are currently in the negative about $20,000 at this point in time. And the $25,000 will help get us through hopefully the end of the year. Now, what has happened is we have paid for appraisal services out of this line specific to the convention center. So I'm going to be asking to get on the FabTax agenda to see if they would approve the use of our food and beverage funds for that purpose.
All right. Are there any questions from council members on this? Okay, um, Jeff, oh, please feel free to say something if I don't notice your hand. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just see that the narrative refers to the, the cleanup of encampments as being one reason why this line is so depleted. And then goes on to say that the intention is to request FabTax to, to reimburse. But you're, you're saying the request to FabTax would only be for the appraisal of county buildings related to the convention center. It doesn't actually have anything to do with the encampments. Encampments is just why the line is, okay.
Yeah. Yes, I actually, I didn't reference the encampments when I was speaking out loud. It is in the document here. Those are costs we have incurred, but those costs plus the convention center expenses that I think that we can get reimbursed from, from FabTax. They have, they're two very separate things. The only amount we would be requesting would be the cost of the appraisals on the convention center from FabTax.
Thank you. About, about, I'm sorry, one, one follow up. About how much has been spent so far this year on convent, around conventions, I'm sorry, encampment cleanup?
Oh, um, I actually can't tell you. I can tell you after, after the fact, but I don't have, I mean, we had two cleanups and I can't tell you. I can, I can go back and look. I don't have that off the top of my head.
I do think that would be interesting to find out.
They were expensive.
Yeah, I seem to remember. So that would be a substantial reason why that line is depleted then.
Right.
It's the need to conduct those cleanups. Okay. Thanks.
Any other, oh, Counsel Iverson?
Ms. Purdy, as we know that these have been so expensive, is there a plan to prevent encampments going forward?
You guys have all the hard questions this evening. I don't think that there's, that we have any new plans. I am part of a group that's heading home. And so that's, that group is looking at alternatives for people who are sheltering on the street or, you know, are not, not finding shelters. So the community as a whole, I believe, is working on that con, that, that problem that we have. Monroe County government is doing the best that we can to mark our properties as no trespassing and that you can't store your goods or camp there. But when people are looking for a place to, to stay, they are inventive and find areas that we did not know until, until it becomes generally brought to our attention by the public. That's, that's how it, we've become aware of both of these encampments.
And these were both on the west side of town, is that right? Other side of the highway, I'm thinking, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I'm not good with direction, but I do know that one, one was behind the at home.
Yeah.
Yes.
One was on the other side of the highway. The one was off Patterson Avenue between cattle and walnut.
Okay.
Or not walnut, but second.
Yep, yep, okay. Okay. Other questions? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor, Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed six, zero.
Thank you. And we have another item.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1,000, 0161, General Fund, county buildings of 91,000 in the services category.
Second.
Oh, second. Messed without you, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, this is, um, this is a significant request. I looked, went back over the last 11 months and we have been expending about $45,000 a month on our, all of our buildings, on all of our utilities. And I believe it was last year, maybe the year prior, when we first put the utilities all in one line. We had had them broken down by buildings, but now we're able to actually pay it out of one account line and staff is able to identify what building it is. So we can look into our financial software and run a report if we need to. However, I think it has kind of affected how well we have planned or budgeted for, for these expenses. Now, what I have done is I've looked at the account and I checked it before I came in here. I think that we could actually reduce our requests from 91 to 86,000. It's not a lot, but.
Counsel, I move to amend my previous motion from $91,000 down to $86,000. Second.
Are there any questions about the amendment? A change in the number? Okay. Then could we have a roll call vote on that? Amendment.
This is a roll call vote on the amendment to reduce it to 86,000. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Sorry. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great. So are there any questions from council on the original item? Yes.
So for, now that all the utilities have been wrapped up into one, are, are, has that changed all the calculation of moving funds into the Energy Conservation Non-Reverting Fund? Or how does that work?
The Energy Conservation Fund was supplemented by monies that were received when we got credits for switching on our LEDs. There were some other things that happened in which we actually got money back. That's what went into that fund. I don't believe we are receiving any funds at this point in time. If we find such a program, then definitely that's where those funds would have to be deposited back into.
Okay.
Sorry.
And, and then I know in a previous GEO bond, a general obligation bond, we had asked for estimates or a study on putting solar on a series of county buildings. I believe those estimates have come back. Is that correct?
I know that we've gotten a report and that's gone to my maintenance manager. And we are still waiting on a report from the airport. And I think they were also, there was the airport and then I think there might have been some at parks. However, I do know that we have received some of those reports, but not the whole, the, the total proposal has not been received. Once that's received, my understanding is that then we'll put it out for.
Sure, sure. No, that's, that's exciting. I'm glad that we commissioned that study and we're moving forward. I'm putting solar panels on more buildings. I think that's going to definitely impact what we're talking about tonight in the future.
Yeah, hopefully. And, and the showers building, and I know that we, you know, the parking lot there has to be remedied. It's in poor shape. Once that's done, we're also thinking about putting in covered, some covered parking spaces that have the solar panels on the top and then charging stations. And so I think, and also using those for lighting so that we can have most of our lighting be solar powered, obviously backed up by some kind of generator. But yeah, kind of exciting.
I think so. Thank you.
Other questions from council? You had said that, that the accounting had changed a little bit and that instead of being separate lines, then they're all in one, but you can still dig in and find. But you, I think you mentioned that that sort of affected the budgeting. What did you mean by that?
I think that it affected how I looked at and planned for the following year during our budget process. Because things were broken up. And then when I'm looking at it, at that stage of the game, it's not always, it's earlier in the year. I try to forecast for later. But I think that given, combining all of them into one account from multiple accounts and going through 20 and 21, where we had, we were not quite as back as we are now, that I missed some potential increases that I probably should have caught.
Okay.
I was going to ask this. I mean, is there a chance that some of this is cost going up on?
Oh, definitely. I'd like to actually look into that and be able to tell you definitively, but.
Sure. Well, I, I was gonna, when I looked at that, I was like, oh yeah, this is just, you know, we've had additional gas lines or gas, gas appropriations. I could see a cost thing. One thing that I sort of understand what you're saying on the, the, from many lines down to one issue, Chris is, I always used to have a people soft, is that you're paying bills, but sometimes you're not seeing the narrative you used to see when you're out with your old school ledger.
Yeah.
And that's, it's kind of where software, which is supposed to help you, doesn't always help you. So.
That's a very excellent way to describe it. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item nine on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the legal department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1,000, 0277, General Fund Legal of $25,000 in the services category.
Second. Sorry, Madam President, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote.
Okay.
Just to avoid potential appearance of conflict of interest.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Cockro.
Good, good evening, Jeff Cockro from the legal department. Unfortunately, we are here to ask for an additional appropriation. I think that you may have all received an email earlier today that kind of outlined some of the cases we're working on and things like that. The long and the short of it in our litigation line, if you include transfers, we've had $78,000, $90, $78,093 and 75 cents come in and the same amount go out. And in our litigation deduction, we've had $34,881.26 come in and also go out. We anticipate a, some billings for the, I think it's the Houston South case of 14,000 for the October building. And they did some additional work in November. And it's also some potential buildings, billion. Actually, I think the Barnes and Thornburg is for the Huff case. I apologize. The U-Banks is for the forestry. And I think we expect some additional in that as well till the end of the year. Plus, we are doing, dealing with ongoing insurance litigation that we do have to pay a deductible amount on. And that's what all these expenses go for. If you have any questions, more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Now, do you have any questions, counsel? Yes, Counsel.
I don't have a question, but rather a comment that I was glad to see that costs have been lower on the Houston South litigation due to factors outside of our control. But nonetheless, it's good to see at this point. I don't expect your comment. Yeah, I think it's great that costs are coming in lower, but you know, they're, they're still there.
Yeah. Other questions or comments from council? Okay. Any public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Abstain.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero to one abstain.
Thanks. And then we'll move to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2022 dash 26A, Part One, Preliminary Approval of a Tax Abatement for Oliver Winery Company Incorporated that reads as follows. The Monroe County Council resolves that the area shown in the attached exhibits, whose address is 200 East Winery Road, Bloomington, Indiana 47404, in Monroe County, Indiana, is hereby preliminary declared an economic revitalization area for five years pursuant to IC 6 dash 1.1 dash 12.1 at all. The attached statement of benefits submitted by Oliver Winery Company Incorporated is now preliminarily approved as set forth in the attached exhibits. Deduction shall be made for, the resolution is blank. I believe that should be five years? Seven, seven years, pardon me, at the annual rate percentages, percentage indicated, addendum A for personnel, for personal property improvements presented to the County Council of Monroe County, Indiana, read and full and adopted on the 15th day of November, 2022.
Second.
And I'm going to apologize upfront. I had submitted that prior to the regular session and, and things have changed since then. They're actually requesting for the personal property 800% abatement for seven years. And so I'm going to go into a little bit of the, of the background and the, the, you know, kind of where we're at in the process wise, as well as give a summary report of the EDC meeting and what, how they found their recommendation. meeting and, and what, how they found their recommendations. Why I do that, I would ask if the technical service department would go ahead and promote John Black and Jay Walters, who are the company representatives, they are here electronically and they'll go through a presentation. From a process standpoint, it's the same as it's always been in that in this would be a preliminary approval now that we put out a notice and people could go, they think it's through the assessor's office or the auditor's office, look at the maps, look at the information that they provided. Typically, we'll also put that on our website and then notice a public hearing for your December meeting and then have the, the part two, the final part at that point in time. And that's, that's when the, it would be approved or not. So this is preliminary saying, yeah, we've looked at it, we've heard the presentation and we want to go ahead and go through the, the rest of the process. This one was a unique, a unique request. And, and I think judging by some of your faces, the 100% for seven years is a unique request. It's something we've never done before. It's understandable. Let me go through the process on how we came to that as part of the request from the company and also the EDC recommendation. When this was initially requested, it was requested to have a real property tax abatement and a personal property tax abatement. State code, but, but it is for Oliver Winery, who has to have a permit under Indiana Code 7.1, which is the alcohol and tobacco section of the code. In the tax abatement portion of the code, it specifically prohibits issuing a tax abatement for real property for anybody who gets that kind of certification, right? So if they have to get a permit through 7.1, not allowed to have a real property tax abatement on any of the property. So when they made their initial request, the personal property amount for, we had to, it wasn't necessarily the request, but there were a few things in their list of, of personal property that aren't, aren't taxable. It was not something that we would collect property tax on. It was web design and those kinds of things that are more service and not, not property. So the personal property that we're looking at today is $8.3 million worth of personal property. If we would do it under a standard tax abatement, the, the tenure item, the savings would have been, or the, yeah, the savings to the company would have been $317,399. And their net tax, property tax would have been $109,869. Well, no, let me rephrase that. That is what it is with the 100%. It's 317,399. And they would be paying $109,869. If it were under the tenure abatement cycle, it would be 255,630 would be the savings and the net paid would be 171,638. So roughly a $62,000 difference. A real property tax abatement on the 2.75, 2,570,000, real property that they're estimating would have had them pay a hundred, or would have a savings of $187,110. So roughly three times what the difference between these two personal property requests are. And they would have paid a net property tax under that guise of $190,890. So that, you know, I think the RDS or the EDC, when they looked at it, they looked at the prohibition for granting a real property tax abatement on that. They looked at the, the savings that were estimated with that and, and, and then looked at the request and it was well within, it was based roughly $120,000 less in savings to the company. And the company will give a presentation a night to kind of fill in some of the other gaps, why it's needed. What, what, what are the alternatives and things like that that we typically do? But given that this is just a different request than we've seen in the past, I thought I should go through that fairly thoroughly and I hope I have. So I guess before I turn it over to the, to the, the company, are there any questions you have for me on any of that information?
Any questions? I have a question. In your experience, has the, the EDC ever forwarded or reviewed a request and, and not recommended?
Yes.
How often does that happen?
It doesn't happen very often. Typically, I mean, when a, when a company comes and, and, you know, one of the reasons when, when we were talking about, I'm getting a little off topic now, so just reel me in. I'm a, I'm a little tired from last night. One of the things that we, we usually let the BDC all do the initial round of conversations with company to see if it's a good fit. The BDC will reach out to me and, you know, if there are issues that I know about from past conversations with county councils or things like that, I let the company know about that upfront and then they can make a determination whether, whether they want to go forward or not. I mean, there's a lot of situations where they're just trying to see what, what's out there and, and what our expectations are and things like that. So I, I think there's a filtering process before it ever gets to a formal request. But there have been formal requests that have been told no at the, no, they were negative recommendations from the EDC at that level. There's also been requests that have been no recommendations from the EDC. They don't, it doesn't happen very often. I'm not going to tell you it happens one out of two times, right? It, it happens fairly infrequently. But I think there is a process there where, where we try to do, I think with the BDC being the initial step. And I think they do a fairly good job of weeding out a lot of the things that just aren't going to be suitable. And then the EDC will look at it as well and, and on occasion, you know, and, and I could tell you each time it was warranted, have recommended either with no recommendation or recommended, absolutely not.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Mr. Cockrell, I think it would be helpful to see a slide that showed the numbers that you read off in comparison, so we could just look at it and easily be able to refer to those numbers. So when you come back, would you do that, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I think it'd help the public as well.
We will make sure it's part of the packet.
Great. Questions coming? Jeff, hi.
Oh, actually, I was really just going to say sort of the same thing that Mr. Cockrell just said. I remember actually sitting in on one EDC meeting a few years ago where the recommendation was against. And also due, just due to the, the questions that were asked, that petitioner, you know, decided never to move, not, not to move forward. So Jeff's right, that the, the council, basically the EDC doesn't even see the really bad ones. And we don't see the ones that, that they, that, that then might get weeded out just even due to questions raised at the, at the EDC.
Yeah, good. Thank you for that. All right. We're ready for a presentation, maybe?
Were we able to get? And then do you want, I guess, Mr. Black and Mr. Walters, you want us to go ahead and put up the, the PowerPoint and go through it that way? Or do you have a, what, I let people see your faces and give a little bit of discussion before that happens? Just let us know when you want that PowerPoint on.
I'll, I'll spare you from having to look at my face for very long, but I'll give you a brief introduction and perhaps it will be helpful to turn up the PowerPoint. My name is Jay Walters. I work with a site selection advisory firm called Sickage, headquartered in Chicago, but I'm based out of Indianapolis. We represent firms that are looking to expand sites all over the United States. Here tonight, representing Oliver Winery. As you may know, Oliver Winery last year was acquired by an investment firm called Next Phase Capital. It's good news for Oliver Winery, which means it's been an injection of capital and they're planning to accelerate their growth plans. We're here tonight to talk about some options for that. They're looking at doing an expansion either there in Monroe County or doing some contract production manufacturing of wine in either New York State or Washington State. It's an exciting project. John Black, CFO with Oliver is here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to him. Let him go through a little bit of the background of Oliver, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, but as well as some of the new developments with the company. So John, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jay. We can advance the slide. So first, you know, thank you to the committee for inviting us in to speak tonight. We appreciate having the opportunity. So I'll, I'll be brief. If we can move to ahead another slide. You know, the winery just celebrated our 50th anniversary. So I'm sure anyone in Bloomington knows at least the name, if not have visited us somewhere along the way. So, you know, proud of celebrating 50 years. We were acquired by a private equity firm in March of 2001, Next Phase Capital, but they are, you know, very interested in investing in our growth and very supportive of our business. We are now the 28th largest winery by Wine Business Monthly in the United States. So as you know, you can expect most of the winery production is on the West Coast. So being number 28 here in the middle of the country, you know, it's quite an accomplishment. Let's go to the next slide. As I mentioned, you know, Next Phase Capital, they provide, you know, some guidance and experience in growing businesses. So we have their full support of, you know, continuing to expand and grow. We've, you know, come to a point where even though the 28th largest winery and have quite a bit of capacity for production here. And, you know, today we're distributing to 41 states, you know, but still have more opportunity for growth. We have decisions along the way in terms of capacity and winemaking is a very capital intensive business. And so the, the driver behind our request is to help support the decision to continue to invest for our production capacity here. Then the decision is basically as we run into bottlenecks, as we continue to expand, are we utilizing contract manufacturers, which again are, you know, outside of the Midwest, you know, generally West Coast, and there's a few in the East Coast? Or do we, you know, buy the equipment and continue to invest here? You know, I believe the management team here, we want to continue to invest here and believe the best outcome is continue, to continue to invest, which is the driver for some support for incremental growth to, you know, buy equipment and expand. It's not an overly labor intensive, you know, product, but you know, with growth comes more job openings and opportunities at the winery. We can probably step through the next slides pretty quickly if we advance, just an example of where money gets spent, you know, tanks, large metal equipment, machinery. Let's go ahead and advance. So this is, this is our primary production facility that we are investing in. And this is where the difference came down in terms of the real property, personal property. You know, we had, you know, an example of bottleneck was our warehouse and we need to expand it quickly. That was the real property request, which, you know, do the laws, we shelved the request for abatement there. But we still have, you know, even though we are going to do that here and expand, further growth requires more equipment and that's what the personal property decision is and that, you know, continuing to buy equipment and expand on our campus here for additional production capacity. I think we can probably step through the next slides next. So that's just the site. Work first and training, again, you know, not allow winemaking experience in the Midwest, so everybody we hire, we have to train. So we make a significant investment in personnel. Next slide. We are, you know, making efforts to become more sustainable in our practices in terms of energy consumption and utilization of resources. Again, that requires investment in equipment. Next slide. And you're just going to end with, you know, we're supportive of the community and we also appreciate your support. So, you know, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight and tell us, tell you a little bit about the winery. Just a couple of closing notes, just some awards we've won, 2021 Blue Chip Brand, next slide. We are, go ahead and go one more. This just outlines some of the schedule details, but I think your request from Jeff probably is a little bit more detailed than this. And I think that may be the end. So happy to field any questions if we can.
Thank you. Would, would you mind going back to the previous slide with the numbers? Perfect. Thanks so much. I'm just going to leave that up there so I can absorb it a little bit more, but are there questions from counsel? No questions? Okay, we'll start with, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I have a question. I should know this by heart. I'm ashamed I don't. How many do you currently employ? And is this, your proposal, you're saying you're adding 21 positions and over how long?
So we currently employ around 70 full-time equivalents. We have the actual count of actual employee personals around 100 because we have a lot of part-time staff in the tasting room, the 70 on a full-time equivalent basis. The 21 adds is over a five-year time horizon.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. I, you know, let's see. As I'm looking at the numbers you have up, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit here that with 100% at seven years, the first year would be about a $48,000, $49,000 estimated tax abatement savings, year two would be 68, year three would be 51. And then it would be around 39 to 36 for the remainder of that seven-year term. That's based on the sheet in the packet from Hoosier Energy Economic Development. I, I think, you know, a lot of my, my questions tonight have to do with, as we're considering this tax payment to help you all expand, we are also at the same time under a pretty intense economic pressures here on the county council. I don't know if you're aware, but we also, you know, we, we passed a budget recently that was tricky to pass due to some, some issues there. And, and I just, you know, I, I really appreciate your PowerPoint and I just wanted to take this time to kind of express some of those, those thoughts that are in my head. I don't have them formulated into any specific question at this point, but I, I wanted to be able to at least express some of the thoughts that were percolating in my head as I'm, I'm considering this. So I think, I think I'm going to stop talking now.
Okay. Counselor McKim?
Yes, actually, when, when do you plan to actually make the decision about whether to make this investment?
Yeah, since this is focused on the personal property, these are actually staged investments over the next five years. So it's just as we hit, you know, bottlenecks, you know, certain equipment we need to order, you know, in advance and late out. So it's really over five year, which probably the, you know, there's, you know, certainly a substantial amount in the next, in the near three years, you know, just to, you know, build out the production capacity, but it's, it's over a five-year period.
Thanks. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about this project. I think this is, you know, Oliver Winery is an iconic Monroe County brand and it's enjoyed throughout the country. And I certainly really want to do anything we can to make sure that it, it, production stays here and then it stays an iconic Monroe County brand.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, what I understood, our purpose tonight is we are voting, but we're voting to preliminarily approve, which we are voting, but we're voting to preliminarily approve, which then keeps the process going. And we'll have a final approval presumably in December.
Yeah, absolutely. We would notice a public hearing for your next meeting and then we would have that public hearing. And then that would be a time you would make a final determination.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Other questions? Yes.
Yes, with 21 additional FTEs expected. Can you tell us about the average salaries for these, these new personnel?
I think we have listed on the application, an average wage of $21.63 plus benefits.
And those, those benefits bring that up to just shy of $30, $30 an hour, if you include the cost of the benefits. I'd also like to kind of give a little bit more background of what the EDC, because the EDC, when, when we had the discussion, really honed in on the, where else would you go? And so, you know, when they talked and they, they went through it fairly quickly, but when the EDC really questioned them on them, they, they, they rattle off three or four different facilities that are currently in existence that would be capable of taking over some of this load. And so, you know, I think that carried a lot of weight with the EDC in the fact that there was true decision-making and that this was truly something that was bringing something in. I think that was an important factor in the recommendation for this different schedule than we're used to.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Greiner?
Good evening, council. My name's Clark Greiner. I'm the Economic Development Director for the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And I'm here to, on behalf of the BEDC, to express support for Oliver Winery and what they are doing. With the abatement requests that they've made, when you look at adding 21 new jobs over that period of time. Obviously, we all know that we're preparing to face some headwinds economically, both for the county, but also for the company and for people. So if we can add additional payroll within our community over the next few years, I think that would be a fantastic thing. The other side of this is that if you look at their average wage, it's well above almost $30 an hour. That's a great number for hourly wages. So I think those are all positive things. So if there's any, and I would be happy to talk with you later about some of the figures to help get that a little more clear within your minds to be able to help understand the details of that and why those decisions were made. And just to reiterate what Mr. Cockrell said is that there are choices that they have. We're, we really want to keep that investment of personal property that is a significant amount of personal property here. They do have choices to have manufacturing done in the Washington state. New York is another place where they have that done. And so the investment allowing them to help take, give them a little relief on some of the taxes would be very supportive of what they're trying to do with regards to keeping that investment here. And then the other thing is the company recently was, is named as one of the top places to work in Monroe County and certainly the state of Indiana. So I think that's something that the company's been around for a significant amount of time. And your show of support would be most appreciated. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I just noticed that Counselor Hawk has her hand up and if you would go ahead and unmute, that'd be fine. Counselor Hawk?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry, I stepped out of room for just a minute. So I've, I've saw the presentation. And I heard the response from Mr. Greiner. Now, is this, so now are we getting ready to vote on preliminary because I'm not allowed to vote? Oh, I know. I had my hand up. But that was quite a while ago.
Yes, that's it.
Right. Okay. Well, I was, what I wanted to make the point is that would you offer an abatement, it never means you're going to be getting less of what we're receiving now. It means that the growth of the new taxes coming in will be less. But it will continue to grow and grow until it hits the full amount. Is there, is there any difference in this because you're talking about it's with personal property? And that is a question of our attorney? Is Mr. Cockrell there?
He is. Give him just a second.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm such a wimp tonight. I have just.
I'm not, I don't know if I understood the question.
Okay. The in always with abatement, we have to recognize that it isn't that we're seeing a reduction in taxes that we're receiving, receiving now. It is a reduction in the growth of the taxes, but it will always be more. But now this is asking for 100%. It, it still doesn't mean less than what we're receiving right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, that was the point that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good thing to make sure everyone knows. Um, any, so we were at public comment. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comment? Jim Shelton has his hand raised.
Good evening, Jim Shelton with the chamber. I just want to speak on behalf of the chamber in support of this. I couldn't agree with Mr. McKim more. They are an iconic employer here. They are a great employer and they are a great corporate citizen. They support all manner of, of social entities here. And I think anything we can do to help them and help them grow and help them grow here, we ought to do. So I urge you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Then we will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Oh, we get to see you, Mr. Cockrell.
Council, I move to approve ordinance 2022-47 amend terms and conditions for the purchase of land. And let me read that resolution. Pardon me while I get to it. Okay. Ordinance 2022-47, an ordinance to amend the approved and fixed terms and conditions for the purchase of land. Whereas pursuant to the authority granted to the Monroe County Council by the General Assembly of the State of Indiana under IC 36-2-2-20, the council, the conveyance or purchase by county of land having a value of $1,000 or more must be authorized by an ordinance of the county fiscal body. Pardon me, I lost my place there. Fixing the terms and conditions of the transaction and whereas the Monroe County Board of Commissioners intend to purchase land for the Bill C. Brown Revocable Trust seller under certain terms, which are described in the attached and incorporated contract for purchase of real estate marked as exhibit one. And whereas the original exhibit one indicates a purchase price of $10,020,000. However, the average of two appraisals was $10,000 less. And whereas the seller and commissioners have agreed to amend the purchase agreement to reflect the average of two appraisals shown in exhibit two. The amendment requires council approval pursuant to IC 36-1-10.55 and IC 36-2-2-20. Now therefore be it ordained and established by the Monroe County Council as follows. Section one, the Monroe County Council has been provided appraisal for the property owned by the Bill C. Brown Revocable Trust and describes exhibit one. Section two, the council wishes for Monroe County to acquire the property owned by seller and described in exhibit one and is amended in exhibit two. As the fiscal body for Monroe County, this ordinance serves as the expression of the council's interest in purchasing the land is required by IC 36-1-10.55. Section three, per IC 36-2-2-20, the council approves of all the terms and conditions described in the contract for purchase of real estate, which is attached here to as exhibit one and exhibit two. Section four, to the extent council approval is required, the council approves the execution and deliverance of any and all documents necessary to approve the contract for purchase of real estate and authorizes officers of the county to take any and all action necessary to ratify, approve, or finalize the transaction. Ordinance 2022-47 is hereby presented to the Monroe County Council of Indiana, read and full and adopted this 15th day of November 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, I would just say, as with all ordinances, this requires a, either a unanimous vote at the introduction tonight, or it would just go to the next, to the next meeting for a second reading and a second, for a second introduction. Essentially, the change from the previously approved one is that it reduces the purchase price by $10,000 to reflect what the average of two appraisals is.
Are there any questions from council? Yes.
Mr. Cockrell, given the report last night at City Plant Commission, I looked through here to see if there was a condition in this approval that would keep us from moving forward if there was not approval for rezone of the land.
The, the, this, this purchase agreement is contingent upon rezoning the land to a zoning that would allow for the jail as a conditional use.
Okay, I just, I was trying to read, read through this and I just didn't see that specific wording. But it's, you assure me that it's there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any public comment on this item? Then let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim? I believe he stepped away. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Great, thank you. And now we're at number 10 on our agenda, which is the highway department.
Council, I move to approve the highway department's request for a fund-to-fund cash transfer of $2,800,000 from Fund 4920000 Westside Economic Development, Richland Township Tiff, to Fund 8165000 Bernal Pike and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in Fund 8165000 Bernal Pike in the amount of $2,800,000 in the services category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Ridge.
Good evening. This is just actually to keep our project going for the Vernal Pike Connector Road. The appraisal came in a little higher than what we anticipated. We'll be ironing out those details. But to be able to go ahead and acquire the property, we have to deposit the funds in the courts so we can get access to the property. NDOT has stepped up to, they awarded the project in 2017 of a little over $7 million for this project due to the cost and it's 2022 now. They're going to go ahead and bring it up to an 80/20 and put another $3 million to the project, bringing it a little bit over 10 million. So this shows that we're committed to keep the project going and, and moving forward.
Great. Are there questions from council?
Yes.
Well, let me be able to say publicly, congratulations. That's great news. It's always great when you come before us and it seems like your eyes coming in with more, more fun. So I'm very happy to support this.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson? Counselor Munson stepped away. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed four zero.
And then we have our item.
Council, I move to approve the highway department's request for a fund-to-fund cash transfer of $150,000 from Fund 492000 Westside Economic Development, Richland Township Tiff, to Fund 8164000 Curry Woodyard Smith and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in Fund 8164000 Curry Woodyard Smith in the amount of $150,000 in the services category.
And this one?
Second.
This one?
This is actually for our Curry Pike, Smith Pike, Woodyard Road Intersection Project. It has been completed, so we'll be going through the steps to close out this project. We have to come to a zero balance in these accounts when it's a grant reimbursable fund. So we're transferring out of the West Side tip and to this grant fund to help bring it back to a zero balance.
Are there any questions or comments from council on this item?
It's busy over there. Every time I go over there, people are just zipping through those roundabouts. It's cool.
It seems to be working.
Yeah, it sure does. That's a good school project.
Other comments or questions? Any public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Abstain.
Motion passed four zero one abstain.
And now we move to item C.
Yes, council, I move to approve the highway department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1197000 Stormwater Management of $20,000 in the Supplies category.
Second.
What do you have for us on this?
We want to put some new tires on a tandem truck and a pickup truck. So we want to go ahead and get that additional and get that before the winter. So.
All right. Questions, comments from council? No. Any public comment? We need some tires. Let's do it. We have a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed five zero.
Great. Item D?
Council, I move to approve the highway department's request and a new, for a new account line, 23400 by two minutes in Fund 1186000 Rainy Day Fund and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $1,001 million in the Supplies category. Be a problem, wouldn't it? I need a second.
Second.
Can you remind me about this item?
Pardon me?
Could you remind me about this item?
I can.
Vaguely remember it.
So we actually had put it into the 2023 budget. We have had many discussions on assistance for the paving. We have had many discussions on assistance for the paving program for the county. We're waiting for word on this last July submittal for community crossings, which we've submitted to since two thousand sixteen. We've been awarded in those calls, and it's a fifty-fifty match. If we're awarded, those will be announced later at, this year. Our match would be eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars if we're awarded those four paving projects. And January will turn around, and we will resubmit a new list, and that call for projects, again, if we're awarded in the spring, we'll have to come up for that much match. Our MBH budget roughly runs around to one point two million for paving, so local road and street, we've used all of our budgets, which is necessary to show that we have used all the budgets available to use for paving before we've reached to outside sources. So that's why we wanted to come to the council to ask for additional funds to improve the paving program in the county. The cost of the, the materials and such going up, and labor, and hiring outside sources has caused us to come in and ask for that assistance.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments from council? Counsel Iverson?
Uh, just that, uh, we had discussed this numerous times, and this would bring our rainy day balance down to seven million six hundred and twenty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars by my calculations, I think we had talked about. And I think this is a worthy investment. I drove on some really nice roads out at Salt Creek Township and Benton Townships, and what makes a world of difference, makes a world of difference, so y'all did a good job.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right. Um, could we have, oh, public comment? Is there any public comment? I do not see any public comment, so roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And that is all of it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have item eleven, which is from our Aviation Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund four-eight-zero-two-zero-zero-zero, Aviation Building Fund, of nine thousand dollars in the Services category. Second.
And we have, um, Carlos Lovertev on the screen with us, okay, welcome.
Uh, greetings, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. All right. The, uh, at the last board meeting, the Board of Aviation Commissioners, uh, agreed to approve, uh, to pay Intertech a nine thousand dollar fee to install bird exclusions on Hangar I. That hangar has a kind of a little bird infestation problem. And, uh, we need an appropriation from our, our building fund into the hangar repair and maintenance line to, to affect that. So I, we had some pictures, I don't know if they're rolling. We had some pictures of some of the, uh, the bird droppings. It's our large transient hangar. It's about a twenty thousand square foot hangar, so aircraft that, uh, kind of come and go and need some shelter for a few days, and there's also some long-term tenants in there as well. Uh, they, they leave their aircraft in there, but there's about, uh, there's a small flock of starlings, maybe twenty to thirty, and, uh, they're really doing a lot of damage to the hangar, they're nesting inside, and the droppings are falling on people's aircraft. Uh, we've tried a number of, uh, deterrents, but the problem is, uh, there's, there's just some, some cracks and crevices where the doors fold that the birds are able to get through. So Intertech will install a series of very rigid bristles that will kind of interlock and, and kind of preclude any birds from getting inside of the hangar. And then they will also go inside the hangar, uh, remove any nesting material, and sanitize the, the building as well.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Uh, nothing, all right. All right. Nothing. Um, I don't have a question either, sounds like, uh, yeah, exactly, gotta do what you gotta do, I guess. Um, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McCam, or sorry, Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, now we are at item twelve.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-nine twenty-two-three meeting schedule for County Council and Personnel, Personnel Administration Committee PAC. Second.
Um, we looked at this last meeting. It seemed lovely. And I believe the change, there was one change where PAC wanted to go ahead and schedule out their meetings for the entire year as opposed to just the first four months. Was there anything else that had changed on that?
No, um, we just kind of changed the way it looked a little bit. So we're hoping that that'll make it easier for departments and, and those to be able to find the dates with regards to, um, scheduling for additional appropriations as well as the meetings. And, um, I had, uh, Ms. Molly here to help me with the wording on that, so she, we redone the wording, so all the wording is at the top, and then the schedules were at the bottom, so that's the only difference that you'll see.
Okay. Um, looks good. Do we have any questions from council? Do we have any public comment on our schedule? All right, seeing none, and we will approve this for the roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, five-zero.
Great, thanks. And now we are at item thirteen, uh, which is a discussion regarding merit deputy and correctional center personnel in their compensation. I know that Counselor Crossley and Counselor Munson in particular have worked a lot on, um, kind of pulling data together, and um, a lot of information for us to consider. Um, would either of you like to talk to us about this?
Well, I think I was tapped to do this.
I was trying to make it seem impromptu.
I, I, I think you were trying to make it optional. Jen Crossley, you want to jump in here?
I will when you go.
Okay. So I think it would be good this evening, uh, to begin this discussion with reviewing some background to the, to the issues. Over the last several months, both the correctional officers from the jail and the merit deputies from the sheriff's office have representatives who have come to the council to ask our help in dealing with declining staff numbers, declining morale in some cases, and also decreasing, uh, numbers of applications or quality of applications to fill vacant positions. They recommended increased compensation and bonuses to help deal with these issues. Jennifer Crossley and I as co-liaisons for the jail, and Jen Crossley and Trent Deckard as co-liaisons for the sheriff's office have discussed various options to help with retention beyond the countywide retention bonus that the council approved, uh, last month. And this, the, the countywide bonus is for all employees and is considered a retention bonus because there are issues in many departments. The jail staffing issue in particular has been described as dire, and we are legitimately, as the fiscal body of this county government, concerned about low staffing effects on our public safety and also on our employees. So we looked at information. We received information from the correctional officers, from the jail commander, from the deputies, and in particular from our staff. Uh, Mr. Jeff Cockrell, who saw speaking earlier tonight, and Ms. Molly Turner King, who is the attorney for the county council. Mr. Cockrell has worked with, uh, both the correctional officers and the merit deputies on their contracts, so you know him well. And they looked, uh, all of them have looked at compensation that is provided by other counties. And this is important for us to consider. Uh, we, we also look.
Can you pull your mic around?
Am I not speaking close enough? Let me move closer. Does that help?
Yes.
Sorry. I hope you heard what I just said, because, uh, the background information is important to what we're going to talk about in just a minute. So considering all this, we want to be able to help with the situation and also attend to our fiscal responsibilities. And that means we need to know that the fiscal impact of any proposal with the help of Kim Shell in our council office. We put together, uh, proposals, uh, listening to fiscal impact, and council members have seen some of this that has gone out in their packets and emails. And I think this would be the right time, Michelle, if you would put that on the screen.
I need to share my screen, please.
So before, wow, that's tiny. Would you, would you, you can't make it larger?
Well, which section do you want?
Let's, okay, let me say that we came up with, uh, two proposals labeled A and B, and I'll talk about them separately. So let's focus on A here first. I, um, I want to advise that we are having a discussion tonight among council members, and we are going to present options, but these will not be the only options you may wish to consider. We're going to give you fiscal impact information for specific options. But there's enough information just on the spreadsheet alone, that if you want to increase or decrease any of the options, you can easily calculate what the fiscal impact would be. So let's start with Proposal A. And as we discuss this, Ms. Crossley and I, uh, talked about this being funded by the ARPA program. And ARPA funding does allow for retention. Proposal A is a bonus, and that has, uh, specific fiscal impacts. FICA is paid on bonuses, but not retirement. So, so the, we are going to consider the, the seven point six-five percent, uh, FICA rate as part of the fiscal impact. There are, in total, sixty-seven, um, members of the jail staff and of the merit deputies. Uh, there are forty-four, and they are paid from two funds. One from, most from the general fund, uh, and some of them from the Public Safety Fund. So we have to, we have to look at both funds. It's important for us to look at the, the fund balance, uh, for the jail in particular, and the current balance in the, the general fund has unexpended monies, uh, of seven million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, under public safety, there is a smaller amount, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in the Public Safety Fund. You can see for the jail that there is, uh, a proposal of a one thousand dollar bonus to be paid, uh, in late December. I believe Michelle said, uh, the, the, the next to last pay period of the year would be the time when it could be paid, uh, taking into account the requirements for advertising, uh, the approval, I mean, the approval of the council, the, uh, necessary advertisements, et cetera. A thousand, oops, a thousand dollar bonus would be sixty-two thousand dollars for the jail from the, the general fund, and from the Public Safety Lit Fund, uh, five thousand dollars. Michelle, would you like to comment about the balances?
About the, excuse me, the what?
About the balances.
Um, uh, as you know, the general fund has a lot of departments in it, so that's why the amount of unexpended is seven million. So that takes into account every department that has a general fund, so that, that explains the unexpended, expended balance. And so that amount will come out of your, uh, current balance. So that's part of, so that seven billion comes kind of out of that. Okay, is my understanding, is that right? Is that how that works?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
So, the.
I would also note for council, I think the proposal anticipates payment of this bonus at, using ARPA funds, which would warrant a conversation with the commissioners. And as a reminder, the commissioners will be present at the council meeting on November twenty-second.
So if, if the council wishes to move forward with this proposal and to also pay it out of ARPA, we will necessarily be discussing this at our next meeting with the commissioners, because we need both the council and the commissioners working together on this.
I also want to let you know that, with regards to the additional appropriation needed, um, I have advertised based on a recommendation from, uh, the commissioners with regards to the ARPA. So, um, I have got that on there for the December sixth. And so in anticipation of not knowing how or what fund you guys wanted to do, I also did an additional appropriation in general fund, uh, PS Lit, as well as Rainy Day. And I took, um, like a very max of what it would cost. And, uh, so I've advertised way more than enough in all, all of these, just depending on what you guys, what, I wasn't sure how you wanted to do it. But I wanted to make sure I covered all of our bases with regards to advertising, so.
So that's very important for all of us to know, and Michelle has paved the way for us to be flexible. So you can see, um, for, uh, for the jail, it would cost sixty-two thousand dollars plus, in the general fund, plus five dollars in the Public Safety Fund, or a total of sixty-seven thousand dollars to provide a one thousand dollar bonus. If you wanted to cut it to five hundred, you could just divide that by two, very simple. Uh, for the sheriff's deputies, uh, the, the total amount would be forty-four thousand dollars. And, uh, on top of that, uh, you can look at, uh, And on top of that, you can look at adding on FICA, considering both the jail and jail staff and the deputies and FICA, we have a total here of $119,000. So that is basically proposal A. And I'd like to ask you all if you have questions or want to discuss this before we would talk about proposal B. Oh, I should tell you what proposal B is. So you know, proposal B is, is a base increase in salary. So this, which is separate from a bonus. A bonus is a one-time payment, whereas a base increase is a payment that would change with the, the start of the pay period. And it would be in our salary deliberations going forward, year after year after year. Okay. So now for, for the bonus proposal A, do you have any questions or comments?
I just had a really quick clarification. Proposal A and proposal P B are not mutually exclusive for council, right?
They are absolutely not.
It's. Combination. Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for asking that, clarifying it. Yeah.
My question is for staff. Should we go, or should we go with proposal A? Does this meet the allowable expenditures and usages laid out by Treasury for using regular recovery plan funds? I presume it does, but I, I thought I'd ask the question anyway. So proposal A, which is using ARPA funding to provide a bonus, does that, that means Treasury guidance for use for ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was going to say, just to also make a comment. It's also been very helpful to work with Councilman Munson on this as well. And then I'd see out in the audience, we have a collective bargaining unit from our jail that is here. And I know that Councilman Munson and I have been in, in communication with Sergeant Wilson. And we, you know, also said this in our email too, but we also want to make sure that what is said, you know, and our email is also, you know, public to you as well. And so, you know, we understand that this is very frustrating. And we, I'm sorry, we're sorry that it is, you know, taking this long. And we understand the severity of all of the things that are going on, whether it's morale, whether it is health. I'm looking at the team now and I see there's different faces from what I saw back in April. I see two people, with you included, that I recognize. And I realized in trying to reach out that some of the correctional officers have since moved on, hence the problem that we're in. So I don't want you all to feel, and merit deputies too, I'm talking to you as well. But mainly in particular with the correctional staff, because they were the ones that came to us first. But we don't want you all to feel that conversations have been fallen on deaf ears, so to speak. And then in conversations today, when we talk about, you know, for example, the tax abatement and things like that, it's really difficult to sit in this seat and listen to those types of things. And knowing that, you know, we keep talking about, you know, putting investments and those particular things, which I agree, I think we should be doing those things. But I also want to make sure that I say this publicly as well. We need to make sure that we are putting investments in our correctional officers as well as our merit deputies as well. Because without them right now, we do have a public safety issue. We understand with holidays, Thanksgiving is right around the corner. It's nine days away. We understand that, with that being said, there are lots of things that could also, this is a time for family and jovial times. And we're sitting here having to talk to you about issues that you're, you're having. So I, I say all that to say that, you know, this has been, I understand that this has been an extremely difficult and frustrating process, as for some of us as well. And we are trying to do right. It might not seem like in the past that, you know, there are things that we're trying to do. But we, we're, we're trying. I know, and I just want you to know that from the bottom of my heart, as well as Councilman Munson, as well as I also think the rest of our county council as well. So I just wanted to say that. But I also wanted to say in terms of the ARPA funding, we, we know that ARPA funding is something that, it, it's a one-time thing. And we understand that, you know, this is to help to stop the, the trauma and, and try to help whatever we can with the morale of our, our current situation that we currently have. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Munson, but I know we had talked about with the ARPA funding because if, obviously we have to go through the commissioners as well. And we have a next meeting that comes up and we work with them. But the goal was to have the bonuses in the hands of folks before the, before Christmas paycheck. So just trying to, just so that we're all aware that this bonus that we're talking about is something that we would try to get out soon as we are working with the commissioners, as the commissioners would be okay with our proposal, which I would really hope that they would be. But I just wanted to just say things because again, I know sometimes people say things in, in private, but I also want to make sure that it is publicly acknowledged in our meeting that we are really, really, really trying to do what we can.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Crossley, that, for adding that, adding that information. I think that really helps clarify it. Well, let's, let's tackle proposal B then. This is the base increase in salary. And I want you to get that up on the screen. And, okay. The four labeled columns to your left. I want to refer to these. The column headed percentage increase reference. That is the 2022, 2022 current salary with FICA and per added it. And then the second dark green column that says fiscal impact reference. That is the 2023 salary with the 5% cost of living that the council previously approved. And the FICA and per added it. Now, is that all okay with you counselors? Okay. So this is, this will help you understand where the numbers come from.
TS, TS.
Share the screen.
Where the side goes.
To do the what? Oh, thank you, thank you for doing that, Mr. Turner King. Do they, do they have enough?
We're getting there.
They can, I have an extra one.
It's on the screen now.
May or may not be helpful, but.
Thank you.
Are, are there enough paper copies for you all to read? Yeah, all right.
Okay. Okay. And can we move it up just a little bit more? There we go. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Navigating this. So, so discussing what might be possible for us. We wanted to have you all understand that the proposals that we're considering are based on different grids for the sheriff's deputies and for the jail staff. They just simply have different grids and they're handled differently. Their longevity is calculated differently. So we had to sort of play around with this. And another factor is that the jail staff has a grid that is tied to the Wagner, Irwin, Shealy system that we use for all employee, for almost all employee compensation references. And this is something that we've been moving to gradually. We've worked very hard with our council staff to achieve this. Our personal action committee works with this all the time. And there are advantages to staying, staying within a grid because you do know what is predictable and everybody can communicate with that, that one grid. Okay. We looked at a 9% increase for the jail base. That, and I want to tell you, that includes that 5% COLA that the council already voted on for 2023. So that's an additional amount. And we calculated what it would cost in the general fund and in the public safety fund for jail staff. We moved outside the grid and calculated what a 10% would be. And 10% is just a nice round number. It makes a lot of sense. Why do we even look at the 9%? The 9% is based simply on how the different salary ranges are in the Wagner, Irwin, Shealy system for, for the grid. Is that correct, Michelle? Okay.
I'd like to just make a statement that the 9% is based from the 2022 amount.
Yes.
So, you know, that's, it's a, which would then give a, a total, a grand total of 9%.
Inclusive.
Inclusive of that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to make that clear.
4% over what?
4% over, over the 23.
Right.
4% of, but it's really not 4% over 23 because that would be different numbers.
It is crazy when you.
If you look at it.
Percentages.
So that's why, that's why I labeled those columns percentage increase reference. Okay. And the fiscal impact reference. And since we already passed the, the 2023 budget, I'm talking about the fiscal impact over 2023, what we've already approved. Okay. So we can, we can change the, we could do a 10% increase for the jail staff and take them out of their grid. But that's less advisable for staff and, and for payroll. That's all I can say. The 14% and the 15% are bumping things up 5% in each category. So that is, that's just another option. And obviously, it's, it has a bigger fiscal impact. Talking about the merit deputies, the, we did something comparable for them. And the merit deputies have a different grid. Is theirs with WIS?
Yes, theirs is based on a WIS recommendation. So they have their own grid for the merit deputies.
Right. And we can make, we can do 9 or 10%, 14 or 15%. And it will not affect their grid. Is that correct, Michelle?
That is correct. I, I, the only thing I would have to do is whatever you choose, I can easily manipulate that.
Okay.
I would like to clarify with regards to the jail.
Okay.
The jail staff, per their agreement and with the help of WIS, their classifications, their job descriptions have classifications. And so when we moved to accepting the WIS information, we, it was a, it was recommended by WIS that they would use the base amount for their starting salary. So what I'm saying here is, so that, just to make it clear for those that are listening, is instead of using the base minimum, you could use the one year as their base, or you could use the three-year as their base. When you get, and that still keeps them on the grids with our, the rest of our employees. If you use anything, if you use 10, 15, whatever, I would have to go in and create a grid for them with regards to those numbers because it's going to affect the overall rate range, I, I want to say. Okay. I would have to create a new range for them.
And the reason that it does not, that's not the case with the merit deputies is because of the longevity calculation.
Right. The jail has, the jail has a base. And then for every year of their longevity, it's added to their base rate. So they're just a totally different animal. It's harder to, to calculate and keep it to a workable kind of plan.
Okay. Okay. In addition, we have, we have corporals, which also have a particular kind of calculation. Would you explain that?
Right. The corporals within the jail, they get the base rate. Plus, they also get 70 cents on that base rate as well. So then, so they, so that bumps them up, that bumps up their base. And then on top of that, they get their longevity amounts. So that's another factory I've got to work in when working with creating a grid for jail. This way, if we stay within these parameters, I don't have to. You know, it stays within our grids and it's easier to follow and to understand. But, but if you choose to, it just takes me up a little bit to, to work something out.
I do think there's something to be said for the attempt to stay with the grids that were created and put in place to guide us more than just a year. Now that we're a year in, let's, I, I would strongly recommend that we keep with that system, whatever we're, we're doing.
So I would add to, add to that by saying, we have invested in the Wagner, Irwin, Shealy system. I mean, we have, we have bought the system. So it's important that we use it properly. So I think we should have any discussion that people would like to have.
I think that Counselor Iverson might have something he'd like to say.
I, I wanted to follow up on the, the WIS line of questions because we do have a maintenance plan. And I was reviewing that in the context of these two proposals. And I didn't see anything in that maintenance plan that this, these, either one of these proposals violates. I think, I think we're well within the bounds of that maintenance plan to do this. I do share sentiments though, that I, I, I would be really hesitant to create those new ranges.
Well, and, and I, I do too, because before we went into 2022, I went back and looked and I had at least 18 to 19 different grids.
Yep.
And it was a pain to keep track of every single one because some of them were just for one person. Yes, this is a group. But like I said, it's your decision on how you want to move forward. And I will work with whatever you choose to decide.
So continuing that line of thought, we want to stay with the grids. And I feel like we should consider a priority on equity between the two groups. So doing the same thing for the jail employees and the, the deputies. Which it sounds like we can do if we do 9% or 14% or some percent that lands you at one of those year steps. So the jail is kind of setting the, the.
The floor.
The floor. Yes, thank you. Just makes the numbers weird, but makes the grids work.
Right. Right, and then, and just as a reminder, whatever you choose with regards to a percentage increase. This is going to affect their base moving forward.
Right.
For years to come, so.
Which brings us to the next point to consider, which is that fiscal impact. Of, which you've laid out here really nicely. And then I look back up at the, the top of this whole page that has the current balance and unextended balance.
Do you want to see that?
And I would. Thank you. So that.
But this is for 2022.
Yes, that's a 2022.
Right, so. I guess my questions then kind of turned toward. Anticipated, like is this typical, is this, I mean, what's the anticipated. Capacity in PS Lit to handle this. I know that I'm asking for numbers that don't exist, that do get.
You are.
I know, I know. But I'm just, obviously. So to the extent that we can think about this. I guess I'm just wondering what people are thinking with respect to how this could be. Sustainable.
Yeah.
So I certainly think about sustainable too. And I will remind us that we have a deficit budget for 2023 and we all know that. We, I don't think we can expect any additional funds coming in from. For Public Safety Lit. And. I can't, can't project what the, what the. Growth quotient might be for, for next year, the allowable growth quotient. I'm, I'm going to be a fiscal conservative and say, I want to increase the base rate, but I want, I. I urge the lower amount because, because I know where we are fiscally for the county. And I don't feel comfortable. Having a higher amount. And I do want to remind. The deputies and, and the jail staff that there is, that you will be getting that $2,000 retention bonus. For 2023. That's, that's a one-time payment, but, and we wanted to do this for you. But I lean towards the nine percent increase. Others of you may have, have better, better arguments.
Well, I certainly appreciate. That balance, trying to, you know, trying to strike that balance, but I, I also am hesitant if I don't know. What information could I lean on? To. Feel confident that we can afford the nine percent, I guess.
Ms. Gregory prepared a revenue kind of thing for, I think it was for PS Lit, was that correct?
It was.
And I can't seem to get to my email, but I believe Ms. Molly can get it for you, so. I can have her share her screen here in just a moment and that will kind of maybe help you with regards to that. TSD, Molly needs to be promoted, please. Thank you.
Um, do you mind if I just make a quick comment about the report they're going to put up?
I was like, who is talking?
There you go.
Okay, so just a couple of things quickly, just so it all makes sense to you. The 2023 information does not include the supplemental lit because that information is not available yet. So that amount is normally between 2 and 300,000. I mean, obviously I, I can't predict what it will be, but that's the normal. So I think the five-year average was 248,000. So if that gives you an idea, and then, as you know, the. The Monroe County Local Income Tax Council always kind of fluctuates that 0.25%. So it varies between PSAP and then public safety. So we just, we're never exactly sure what that will be, you know, moving forward, but I did give the best estimate I could.
That is quite eligible.
So, so if you want to look at E, column E, you can see like the projected revenue. And I just did 2% to be very, very conservative. Oh, I'm sorry, 3%.
And you're saying a 2% increase, correct?
3% is what I estimated.
Yeah, we see 2%.
Yeah. Column E, line 13 says 2%.
We may be looking the wrong place.
That is the percent change from 22 to 23. So I did an, I did an estimated 3% increase in the date span receipts for 24, 25, and then 26. Does that make sense? Do you see what I'm saying now?
We can't really look at the 2022 because it's 11, not even 11 months.
I did also include the actual, I mean, I gave you the 11 months and then I also, actual certified lit was supplemental is there's a lot in blue.
Thank you for holding my hand.
Okay, so you're saying that what we're anticipating is 3,112, right? And. Oh, that's. I got you. All right. And just for clarity, so for, so that you'll know that the Public Safety Lit budget that we passed for 2023. Is 3,797,175.
3,797?
Yep, 175.
And a reminder, that was also a deficit budget.
Correct.
291,160 in the red.
Correct.
Marty has our hand raised, could.
I think we better.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so. What's there, it's hard to look at all this on the screen. I don't have anything, you know, in hard copy, but. What was included in the 2023 budget for Lit? That might have been one-time big ticket items that we can get out of there and make room to make sure that we've got the money to. Give that higher salary increase to the jailers. I'm not looking at that budget for the lit, so could someone?
I, I'm currently looking at the budget and hold on just a moment.
And if we put any new people in there, we need just take them out. Because this is tough.
I'll share my screen.
Oh, Lord.
This is the column here, whoops, because it's merged, sorry. This column here where it says 2023 requested was what was approved.
So. My question is what, what in there is something new? Or 2023 that might not have been in there before?
What we did add was the, the retention bonus in the Sheriff's Department. There is nothing different from the year before with regards to their budget in the. They increased, you know, the travel training by a thousand dollars.
How much the retention bonus because we can get that out of ARPA? That's not going to be going, that's not an ongoing expense.
32,000.
Okay, so if you check that out, is, doesn't mean we wouldn't do it, we would just do it in a different fashion.
The prosecutor's office has split salaries with regards to domestic violence and their sex crimes. As well as the, and it, because it's split with a grant. So this is the, as well as their $4,000 retention.
That, so that was my question early on was let's go through this and look at. Places where we can remove the expenses from this fund and, and fund the jail staff there.
Well, I have a problem with doing that now because our budget has been approved and all, everything's. Finish up in the county and at the state. We just can't go redo the budget for 2023.
I think I'm more interested. We certainly can, for just, we can certainly do that next year at the beginning of the year.
Next year is different. I, I would like to ask, in Public Safety Lit, are there any, right there, capital items required?
Equipment, radios.
We have one in the Commissioner's Office with regards to law enforcement radios of 165,000. We have a services in TSD, but that is to help supplement their, you know, the communications with the. Their laptops and, and such with, within their, the vehicles. The courts, we have the security. And then you go to the probation where they have a probation officers and their retention. Yeah.
Okay.
Which one, this one? Oh, yes, and we did add longevity to the, the probation officer, so that's a, something else. Didn't change from last year.
And see, I mean, if we don't take that out of there and move it someplace else, we're just saying, well, those people are more important than the jailers. And I, I don't think that's acceptable.
So, I mean, that, other than the commissioners, there's not another capital item that can be moved. You know, that, that's out there. Everything else is either in supplies or services other than personnel, so.
Well, how much over?
We, we were 291,160 in the red in the PS Lit fund for the 2023 budget. And then the total fiscal impact on PS Lit, if we do a 9% is 41,000.
Yep.
So. Now, we, there, there are really healthy operating balance in PS Lit. But again, as we've talked about before, we, you know, this is, if we do, if we do 9%, it's going to be going on into the future. And at some point, it's just going to.
It's going to eat it up.
It's going to eat it all up, so we need to be really careful with how we do this. I, I mean, assuming we do. Can I zoom out and ask a, a bigger question?
Please.
So we have. People wearing the uniform today that are going through this, I think it's helpful to remember, this is, the problem we're trying to solve is retention. And my question to, to you, is it okay if I ask questions of?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. It, what, what level do we move the needle on, on retention? Like, how much do we invest to keep guys and folks, excuse me, on staff? I mean, is, is 9% a 9% increase enough? I'm seeing, I'm seeing head shake, no. So let me ask a follow-up question, is 14% enough? And that's a base. That's a base rate of anywhere from 2286 to 2515. I mean, I, I know you can't talk, you can't talk for your entire, you know. Negotiating group, but we just heard from Oliver Winery, they're paying that much for folks making wine. Mm-hmm, that's right. So for the benefit of those listening to cats, the comment in the back was, we, when they heard that Oliver was paying. 21 something. On average, we had folks in the back saying that they were, they were, that was awfully enticing to them. And, and so that's, that's part of this question. We heard Councilmember Crossley raise this very issue. That, that, you know, we're, we're trying to solve our attention issue, and so we're threading a needle here. We've got to solve a problem with very little resource. Well, I shouldn't say, we have, we are very blessed. We, we have an abundant budget, but still, that's, that's the challenge before us.
So one thing I'd like to just throw out for you all to think about, and that is. Maybe, maybe we should be using ARPA. For additional bonuses in future years while we still have it. That's through 26. And. Because we, we can't predict right now what, what's going to happen with Public Safety Lit or the general fund. So maybe we should be looking at larger bonuses rather than. Increasing the base.
I certainly respect that decision. I do think that's the. Kind of conservative way to look at, you know, to look at it, to the safe maybe way to look at it. I really would like to, to find something that's a little. A little bit more. Lasting. We just, you know. Can't just bonus our way.
So.
Booing a whole career.
Right.
You know.
So both, let me just, let me just summarize a point and say that for. For the general. for the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund together, the nine percent increase is four hundred and eleven thousand. That's a total for both jail and the deputies.
It just seems like we should be able to pull that off.
Huh?
It seems like we should be able to pull that off.
But then but then I heard that the deficit numbers that we're just read, that's almost doubling that.
Well, and that's and that was just in P S Lit, the the deficit in the General Fund was three point seven million dollars. So again, we have operating balances in that fund. So but but again, we're not talking about a one time investment. We're talking about bumping them up for into into the future and you know, that it's going to eat through that operating balance.
And if you move things from Public Safety to Lit, where are you going to put push it to? You're going to push it to, you know, General Fund?
Yes.
You know.
That's where we.
Yeah.
Now, I I want to clarify, just because I'm like, well, we, you know, we don't have this money, blah, 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 doesn't mean I'm against this. I I want to be really clear here. Like, I think we can do hard things. We can walk and chew gum. We can. We can figure this out.
I I was gonna add to that. I said in the last meeting that all of this process for us is is trying to problem solve it and muddle our way to a solution that works because we want to honor the service of those who are in here. And we want to continue that.
I'm just trying to do math.
We're I say muddle. She says math. She's smarter. But the 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 time that we have have already spent on this has got us to this this level detail here. I think we've got, we're not voting on this tonight because we don't have a solution. We don't have it paid for. But I think we can continue to figure that out by looking into these budgets and figuring out what we do. Ultimately, in in my one waving ways, and that's not how it works, but a a combination of what which Counselor Munson has laid out really well, Proposal A and a combination of Proposal B, I think does something. I think it does more than nothing. And I think we have attempted this year to do some things for every county employee. But we have a problem here, and I think that figuring that out is our our sort of next course. None of this is pretty, but the way counties operate by Indiana law is not clear anyway. It's the way the way that the state has this set up is difficult, but we can figure that out. We have smart folks here, I think, and and well intentioned individuals.
I I just want to make a statement. I mean, you know, you guys said something about, you know, doing using ARPA funds for a bonus for, you know, the next proceeding years, but then where's that going to leave people once that? Because they after several years, they're going to be depending on that. So, you know, it's going to run out.
Yep.
And I I appreciate the bonus, but in reality, you know, it's not going to be there, you know, after, what is it, twenty twenty six or? Yeah. So, you know, it's like.
It's called kicking it down the road.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's called kicking it. So but it's like.
So we at our next meeting.
We have to do something.
We have to do something. And I think, I mean, our next meeting is also looking at all of ARPA. And we have the commissioners with us discussing that. I think that that's going to be a whole lot, but I think that's a good time to really pull apart what is what is it that we want to do with ARPA? And how can we fund the other things that are ongoing and need our our attention every year? And not just, you know, in this time of, okay, boon because of the pandemic. Yes.
So I have I have a thought since we're talking with the commissioners at our next meeting, which is next week.
It is.
We have a hit on our budget this year. I think it is in. I don't know whether it's general or public safety or both. But our retention votes for all county employees, that's a two thousand for all employees totals one point close to one point three million dollars. If that were paid out of ARPA, how how whole would be our our public safety and general fund? Can you tell us that tomorrow, Kim?
Well, maybe not tomorrow. I I was gonna say I I've got that report that you and I worked on.
Yeah. But I don't have the deficit number.
I guess if I may to ask a quick question as we're talking about this, does this? Excuse me. Does this conversation warrant, I guess, public comment because I would like to hear maybe from not maybe, I would like to hear from, I guess, our correctional officers from the collective bargaining unit to see like what their general thoughts are. Since they haven't spoken to us and we haven't spoken to them since the summer. I would like to, I don't. Moral of the story is, I think they should be able to make comment of what they've heard since it's been a lot of discussion. So I just I'm asking if we can open it up for them.
Are there any objections?
No, no.
That's very good. If anybody in this room would like to make public comment, please come forward to the podium.
Um, while they're coming forward, I just want to show you, I pulled a report from Lau with regards to our share my screen back again, please. Um. This is a report out of Lau of what was approved in twenty twenty three, and this is the retention bonus report. For the General Fund, this amount is eight hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
It's an interest.
That's for the General Fund. For
Public Safety.
Public Safety. It's fifty one thousand five hundred for longevity. That's the longevity amounts for those two funds.
That's really a big. It's a big help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so for a public comment, we do need you to state your name. And does it need to sign in for them?
Yes, that would be nice.
It's protocol, sorry.
Yeah.
And we have three minutes.
And adjust your mic so your mouth is right in front of it. Thank you.
Sergeant Wilson at the jail. As you know, we've been making listening and everything, and it is kind of frustrating. We hear all this stuff getting approved and approved and approved. And Counselor Munson, Counselor Crossley, I do appreciate you guys responding to emails. I know I sent quite the long email a couple of weeks ago. Counselor Hawk responded as well, so I do appreciate that. Counselor Munson said something about being conservative, but it seems like the council is only conservative when it comes to funding law enforcement. Everything else we watch getting approved. We are bleeding. We're constantly working overtime. Three of us are third shift people back here. We worked last night. We work tonight. So we're running on no sleep and it's constant. A bonus is great for the people that are there. But it's not going to fix the problem of getting applicants at the door. And I'm sure this the sheriff's side is the same way. It's great for the people that are there. But when we're not getting applicants or getting quality applicants, we've got to bump that pay or we're not going to have anybody coming in. We get very few applicants and a lot of the applicants we do get just aren't calling the applicants. Colonel Pro's done what he can do to try to get people in. We've got a sergeant that's been working on doing things like Indeed, recruiting fairs, things of that nature to try to get people in. But when you have places like Catamount, we have places like Oliver Winery that's paying more than the starting pay of the jail. When you have the outlook of what a lot of people see law enforcement as now, people just don't want to do it. We need to have the council, the commissioners, and I'm sorry, I'm really upset that the commissioners were approved a twenty three percent raise when they're only required to work one meeting a month state law. Twenty three percent raise, but you guys are debating a nine percent raise for the guys that are working multiple hours of overtime. That's not okay. That's not. If you guys have got to find the funds for us, that's just not okay. With all due respect to Commissioner Thomas, she says you can't compare other counties when it comes to the commissioners pay. But that's exactly what you do with our pay every single time we're up. Every single time, well, this county pays this and their comparable was highest, but the commissioners are the fourth highest paid in the state regardless in size. You guys have got to do better. That's all I've got to say on the issue. But you've got to do better.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Smith. I also work at the jail. I was adding up your guys' figures here. I added up a total for the, you know, top of everything, fifteen percent and a thousand dollar bonus. My total was nine hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy one. We'll say million dollars, right? Are we worth that to you? You guys are going to have your holidays coming up soon? Or not? Currently, on our staff, just on third shifts alone, there's at least, I would say, twenty holidays that we're not able to take due to a lack of staffing. Every night, we need shift coverage. Sometimes we run without just to make ends meet. What that means for us is our minimum staffing is eight officers, two of which can't leave the control rooms that they're in charge of. Potentially one. So if there's any kind of an incident in the facility on third shift, including myself, I have six other officers as my backup. I would say twenty percent of them might be able to fight if that were to come to be. I don't think you guys understand the the risks that we're taking here with the minimum staffing and the lack of pay. That's all I got. Think of us whenever you guys are enjoying your, you know, holiday meals.
Thank you. Any other?
Good evening. Just gonna sign in real quick. My name is Lieutenant Finer. I work on the patrol side of the sheriff's office. I was with you guys last month.
Yes, welcome back.
That's a pencil. Just like to address a couple of things came up during today's discussion. I appreciate all the hard work put in by by Counselor Munson, Counselor Crossley. All of you guys putting the numbers together. I understand that it's quite an endeavor to hammer budgets and it's something I'm glad that I don't do. With that being said, I when if you remember, our original agenda submission was a request for a twenty percent pay increase. It's a pretty big ask. Well, someone in our agency asked why we didn't ask for more because we're so underpaid. Now, I understand you guys are using the WIS study, and I appreciate that the fact that you went out and gathered information and that you've invested in a system that compares us to similar counties and populations. Fact of the matter is that doesn't affect our problem. Our problem is right here. We are twenty plus percent less, pardon me, paid at base salary starting than both all three sister agencies in the immediate area. So we're basically forcing people to move out of our area to go get a decent wage to catch up with the rest of what the state is paying or other cities that have communities like ours to be paid comparably. With the twenty percent increase that we had asked for, we don't even come close to Bloomington Police. We fall just short of I U P D. You can check the numbers. They were given to you before we came in last month. The WIS system does not address the issue here locally. It does not address the issues for, I can't speak for the correction side, but it does not address the salary discrepancy in the local area, which is what's hurting us. That hurts our recruitment to get new applicants. And like Sergeant Wilson said, there's there's not a lot of applicants to choose from. And if they get and they want to come to Bloomington and work, they're not looking anything past a webpage and starting salary, and we're fourth on that list behind Bloomington, I U P D, Ellisville, and then the county sheriff's office. The nine percent pay increase is over last year's salary. That's correct. Just let me know if I'm wrong. And that includes the five percent COLA adjustment over last year's salary. So that's a four percent increase. We came asking for twenty. We're down to four. The two thousand dollar retention bonus is great for people that are here, but it doesn't fix our problem because two thousand dollars compared to a twenty percent pay increase somewhere else means nothing. It's it's a great way to put a shine on it, but it doesn't fix the issue. The I got it. The budget is is your guys to handle, and I I don't do that. But I know that we've asked to be in here long before we got in front of you in October, knowing budgets were closing. It's important that you just take a few minutes. I'll be finished here in a second. And just realize the solutions you're proposing, the retention bonuses, a nine percent pay increase, doesn't fix our problem. It's not why we're here. We're not here because we just want to get a small bump. We have to catch up. We can't get people to apply to us. We can't get people to stay with us, people with rank and experience. It's a the retention bonus is a Band-Aid. We have a huge bleed here, and we need to stop it before we end up like sister agencies are experiencing the same issues and can't get it fixed. That's my time. I'm over. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. If there are any members of the public online who want to make public comment, you're certainly welcome. Raise your hand. Is there anyone else in here? Okay. All right. It doesn't look like there's any more public comment and oh, there is one. Look at that. Kirsty Compton. Go ahead.
Hi, I would just like to say that I work day shift and we too are short on staff and Saturday on my days off, I came into work because we had two hospital transports that we had to send four officers to the hospital with inmates, and I had four officers at the jail to run the whole jail. And that's with one officer in the control room, one officer in central, so two officers on the floor. So we we are facing a very dire time in the jail. And it is time for somebody to realize we've got a big problem. And and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comment? I want to cut anyone off. All right. We have some thinking to do. We have some number investigating to do. And I want to see this on our next agenda.
For the work session? Okay.
So that we can come up with a solution that can be implemented quickly.
Do you think this discussion should precede the ARPA discussion?
I think maybe.
I think it should, don't you?
I I I would say yes, because that way then you kind of know what you're going to be working into with regards to ARPA. Yeah. And how to handle.
So at the same time, I want to be able to communicate with the commissioners about about possibilities of putting this in ARPA and the numbers. Would you help me do that?
Yeah, and I do believe that you can add things to the worksheet.
Yeah.
Legal has indicated that that's appropriate.
And are you talking about the twenty twenty three bonus into ARPA? Is that what you're?
Yes, that that plus. Yes, that, that plus the countywide bonus plus the bonus for jail and chair.
Okay.
Can I provide just a quick clarification? I just want to make sure that everyone's aware there are two different categories under ARPA that you could use the lost revenue section. And then there's also a, under public sector capacity, another option. So.
So will you be, will you be at our next meeting and can you advise us about this?
Yes, I'll be prepared. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment from counsel? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the information, the presentation, the discussions. It's been good. We're going to move to approval of the minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the September 27, 2022 work session, October 4, 2022, public hearing for the 2023 budget. October 11, 2022, regular session and first reading of the 2023 budget. And October 18, 2022, second reading and adoption of the 2023 budget minutes as presented. Second.
Do we have any council members who would like to change, add, edit, modify, otherwise tear into our minutes? No? Great. Fantastic. We will do a roll call vote then.
Actually, you can do a voice vote because yours is ones.
Oh, because no one else is actually even participating. Got it. Good God. And all right, all in favor of approving the minutes as described by Counselor Deckard, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Are there any council comments for today?
Yeah.
We've had a, we've had a hard meeting tonight, but we are in a beautiful building that has been made more beautiful by our maintenance staff, putting up the Christmas tree and putting the most amazing presents beneath the tree that are all sparkly. And I looked at them and looked inside those boxes and they are empty, the sparkling boxes. But they're, they're very attractive nonetheless. And I just want to thank our staff for the, for the work they did in beautifying our courthouse.
Yep, it's pretty fun. It's such a beautiful place. Any other, yes?
I'll just, again, I know the previous discussion of what we brief, or briefly, oh boy. Um, what we just discussed was, it wasn't very easy to sit here to listen to that. Um, but we should be listening to it because you all are dealing with a lot of this on a daily basis. Um, and so I just want to say, you know, I'm sitting here not just dawdling things, but making notes of everybody who made public comment. And it gives me a lot to think about as all of us moving forward, but we, we really do have to do something. We just can't keep kicking the can down the needle because then it feels like you guys are getting kicked down. Um, and, and that's not right. Uh, when I took this position, I took this in a way of knowing that there were going to be some really hard, hard conversations, some not so great conversations, some maybe good conversations, all that in between. This was very healthy to listen to. Um, and oftentimes we have to sit in our uncomfortableness so that we can get comfortable and make the right decisions. So with that being said, I do appreciate every single last one of you all here tonight. Anybody that was paying attention on Zoom or will watch via later on cats, I'm sure y'all will tell people to pay attention as people should. As elected, we are supposed to be held accountable for the things that we do. And I think this discussion is a part of that process. So I appreciate all that you have done, all that we have talked about and all that we continue to do. Um, also just again, we do today, and speaking of a lot of discussions and conversations, I took out my notes from the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce had a community conversations in regards to jail facility. It's no surprise that we're having this conversation in addition to what we are reimagining here in our community. And I continue to say that, you know, there's lots of things that we should be having, you know, conversations. And there's a lot of finger pointing of who's not doing what and who's doing what. But the issue is we have a lot that is at stake and our issue is we already know that our facilities do not need to hold people with mental health issues and substance use disorders and those that are experiencing homelessness. It's been said by Commander Crowe in our meetings and other people have said it, they don't want to have to do these things. So we, we, in addition to this conversation, we have a lot in the county that we are really truly working on and we should be listening to. So again, I know President Wilson had mentioned that we have our Community Justice Reform Committee and the last meeting was by far one of the most public attended. And I want to make sure that we are continuing these conversations and we continue to have people come to them because we cannot do, the county cannot do this along, alone. The city cannot do this alone. It is we and this community, both city and county government bodies alike to put egos and personalities to the side and less make stuff happen. Because I'm getting so frustrated and so annoyed and listening to everybody, quite a few people just continue to have chit chat, but we're missing the bigger point. So with that being said, again, this upcoming Monday is our Community Justice Reform Committee meeting. Anybody paying attention? Anybody here this evening that will, that can attend, please do, because we have a lot to discuss and we should be continuing to discuss. So thank you.
Well said. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn.